Everybody, thank you for coming out tonight to the Ordinance Subcommittee meeting of January 11th, 2017. I'll do my best. So, thank you for coming out. I appreciate having everybody here. This is a great turnout. This is exactly what democracy looks like, so thank you. I do want to just go over a couple things before we start tonight. First of all, my name is Salem Derby. I'm the Chair of the Ordinance Subcommittee. And I'm so happy that you came and are willing to participate. I do want to set some ground rules. I'm going to ask that each person try to limit their comments to three minutes or under, so everybody can have a chance to speak that would like to speak. If you would, when you come up to the podium, please state your name and address for the record, because we are taking minutes, we need to record that for posterity. When you do speak, please address the Subcommittee. We're going to ask that you do not address specific people, the audience, and we are going to ask that you do not have a back-and-forth. We are going to enforce that you do not boo or heckle. We are going to maintain the highest level of decorum, as that will enable us to be able to speak and listen more effectively. If your point has been stated, and you don't have anything new to add, please consider everybody's time. About staying on topic, we are here to discuss the topic of Sanctuary City and the related topics that fall under that. We are not here to solve the nation's immigration problems. So, we are going to try to stay on topic. If you veer, I will bring you back. So, don't be offended. I'm just doing my job. I wanted to say what our role is here tonight as a Subcommittee. Mainly, we're here to listen. We're here to observe and to hear what the citizens of East Hampton have to say on this topic. We are then going to start charting a course. And as your elected representatives, we are going to try to chart a course that is most appropriate for the majority of the people in the city of East Hampton. And that's what we're charged with. And that's what we're going to try to do. To start, I'm going to allow the sponsors of this motion, this petition, to speak and talk about why they brought this forward. And then, I think, since the mayor and the police chief are here, I'd love to have them chime in and be able to say their piece. And then, we'll open it up to public comment, where you can have your three minutes to say what you think, and we'll go from there. So, that being said, I don't see Councilor Hayes, do I? Is Councilor Hayes here? Hmm. Well, that's interesting. So, I do have Councilor Smith, who is a co-sponsor. So, I will turn it over to Councilor Smith. Thank you, Councilor Smith.
Okay. Thank you, Councilor Derby. My name is Tamara Smith. I'm a city councilor-at-large for the city of East Hampton. And I have a written statement that really explains where I stand on this issue, but I wanted to first make sure everyone knew that I was a co-sponsor of this. I was a co-sponsor of bringing the whole issue of Sanctuary Cities to the city council to be able to have a structured public forum in which to discuss this. My reasoning is, first of all, working with immigrant groups within the area, there is a perceived fear from many people within the city. And I am concerned, as a city councilor, for everybody's safety, regardless of which side of this issue you personally stand on. We are at a very terminus point as a city, because this has really been a divisive issue. My second concern is making sure that we are talking about issues that are actually affecting East Hampton. And in order to do that, I wanted to address -- well, let me just read what I have to say. This is why I wrote it. Okay. So, in my full-time job, I'm a professor of sociology at a local university. And I study the effects of change on society. This is my professional job. I study the changes of the amount of space that is used within a city and how it affects its residents. Sociologists examine the feelings of safety and well-being that community members feel as these changes are occurring. And we also examine sources of inequality and misunderstandings that occur when this change happens. East Hampton is no exception to this rule. Our community has undergone a lot of transitions within the last decade leading up to tonight's discussion. When my family moved here in 2007, we had researched some of the demographics of the city. My spouse is also a sociologist, and we like to look at data. And one of the things that was really interesting, two facts. Aside from the fact that in 2007, over 95 percent of the population within East Hampton was white, a second fact is that during this time, East Hampton had one of the highest proportions of people over the age of 95 anywhere within the country.
What?
I know! I was shocked! And I'm a gerontologist and a sociologist, so for my aging interests, I really was excited about this. Most people don't get as excited about these issues, but for me, that was a real interesting fact. Over time, I've become immersed within the community of East Hampton, and I've seen many people from our city. Characters and figures who have been considered cornerstones of East Hampton life, slowly retiring from public life, moving to warmer climates, or dying. And with a city that had one of the highest proportions of people over the age of 95, that change is just demographically inevitable. But that's not the only way that our city has changed. Since becoming a city councilor, I've also seen many other changes, but also many ways that East Hampton has fought to preserve our historical foundation and our heritage. Since being a city councilor, I have seen renovations to the town hall of East Hampton. I've seen CPA money spent specifically for the preservation of historical records and documents, which include our city's history. And I've seen artist projects which record the oral history of persons living within the city. And one of our city councilors, Councilor Witty, also has a public access show with joy, which actually highlights the local people who live within our city. These are all ways that I've seen and, in some cases, have voted on the legacy of East Hampton being honored and recognized. In the past 10 years, we've also seen changes to East Hampton's composition as well. Our population today is younger as a city than it used to be, and more racially diverse. We -- 95 percent of our population in East Hampton is white, and now that number hovers between 90 and 91 percent. Shows to me, as a sociologist, we've been experiencing rapid change in a small time era, time period. The real estate market in East Hampton is booming, and houses here sell very quickly. This is because our neighborhoods have been aging, and people who move to East Hampton want to stay here for life. And as people age in place and become older, they eventually vacate those houses because they have died, or because their family members who would inherit those houses are no longer living locally. Thus, has really added to our housing market. We've also seen the addition of the Treehouse Foster Care and Elderly Plan community, which, as a gerontologist, I was very happy to see within our city, come to fruition. We've developed new affordable housing complexes, such as Parsons Village, and we've renovated the Cottage Street Mills into affordable housing as well. The city of East Hampton, as another way that we can measure change, has really increased the number of students who are currently in our city. We have now four separate school districts within our very small community of 16,000 people. Not a lot of people actually realize that. The city of East Hampton has our public school system. The Hilltown Charter School System also is within our city limits. The private Williston North Hampton School District is within East Hampton. And finally, the Tri-County School System is also within our city limits. Our city has also developed the Vagacy Mills in town, creating vibrant spaces in previously vacant and underused mill spaces and complexes woven throughout the city. These examples represent substantial changes to our city, and for some people, these changes have been met with weariness. As a sociologist, I would expect that. It's a lot of change in a relatively short amount of time, and I can understand that. In that realm, the term Sanctuary City is a bit of a misnomer. I can't imagine a term that would be more misleading and sure to assure people that inevitable change is coming and there is nothing they can do to stop it than say, "Let's make East Hampton a Sanctuary City." This is one of those cases where the term Sanctuary City has become politically charged and has come to mean something different to many people than what it actually legally entails. The phrase Sanctuary City was born out of a church center movement of the 1980s. Churches, synagogues, and other religious institutions banded together during the 80s to oppose the return of refugees from -- to countries where they had been persecuted, and thus, this became known as a sanctuary movement. This is very different from what the term Sanctuary City has evolved to become. Some cities in locality, such as New York City and San Francisco, have used the term Sanctuary in their community policing policies in solidarity with that movement of the 1980s. These cities have typically had very large physical -- sorry, large, visible immigrant populations. Compared to the communities surrounding East Hampton, such as Holyoke, North Hampton, and Springfield, East Hampton has a very small proportion of undocumented immigrants currently living within our city. It makes sense that these larger cities with larger numbers of immigrants already have adopted Sanctuary City status. Immigrants often live in larger city areas because they have greater anonymity. There is a larger presence of other immigrants. There is more housing available. And there's access to ethnic enclaves or groups of friends, relatives, and neighbors who are also recent immigrants. In addition to these things, there are also sub-economies within Massachusetts which draw in many immigrants. These economies include healthcare settings, the tourism industry, and janitorial and waste management industries. None of these sub-economies have any substantial base within East Hampton. I say this because I have heard several people with concerns that a declaration of a Sanctuary City status would draw in a large number of undocumented immigrants into the city of East Hampton. Our local economy simply does not sustain these industries, and there is a large immigrant -- this is a large immigrant -- sorry, this is a large reason why there are so few immigrants within East Hampton. Issues over which levels of law enforcement should deal with immigration issues have been around for a long time. The issue of undocumented immigrants and how to address them existed before Trump's election. We have seen an escalation in the number of deportation of immigrants since the Bush administration, when INS was re-formatted into ICE under the Homeland Security Act. Under the Obama administration, 2.5 million undocumented immigrants, roughly 1,000 a day, were deported from the U.S. And this can happen in two ways. The first way is that federal ICE agents keep track of undocumented immigrants, and they then come into communities to round them up. The second way is that individual cities voluntarily contribute their resources to collaborate with these federal ICE agents. An example of this would be actively seeking someone's immigration status during a routine traffic stop. The use of this term Sanctuary City has led to great confusion about the intent and purpose of the city of East Hampton having such a policy in place. This term has proven to be a divisive one for the city of East Hampton. Some people have confused Sanctuary City policies with the notion that immigrants in these communities are insulated from any immigration enforcement action against them. A Sanctuary City is simply one that has made a formal statement that, given the choice, they are not abiding in any voluntary collaboration with federal immigration agencies to actively deport undocumented immigrants. This does not mean that if federal immigration agents entered East Hampton to do a search, that East Hampton would be able to refuse their presence. A Sanctuary City does not mean that the community has been -- become a refuge for people who are not living there legally. It does not provide more homes or material goods for people, nor does it guarantee shelter to immigrants. It is not an act of asking refugees from war-torn countries to relocate as a group to East Hampton. Many cities have actually declared themselves Sanctuary Cities without any laws backing up that claim. There actually is no legal definition of Sanctuary City, which is one of the reasons why this has been such a confusing issue for the city of East Hampton. In order to more fully address the issue at hand, I would like to discuss another notion of our community, which is the notion of community policing. Community policing, or community-oriented policy, is a strategy of policing that focuses on the police building ties and working closely with members of their community. This is a particularly useful concept in small cities, where people notice when things have run amok, and they notice when there is something that is dangerous within the East Hampton Police Department's web state -- webpage states that, "Our department is deeply committed to the philosophy of community policing in partnerships with the citizens of East Hampton. I wish to thank our citizens for the ongoing support of the members of our department. It is our belief that the reason we have the success we enjoy is because of the terrific cooperation and support we receive from our community. Without your help, encouragement, and assistance, this community would not be the great place that it is. Recognizing this, the police department will continue to build on cooperative efforts that involve you, the public. I ask that whenever you see an opportunity to become involved in an activity with us," meaning the police force, "that you do not pass up this great chance to make a difference. Our pledge to you is to provide fair and ethical policing and work side by side with our community partners to enhance the quality of life for our residents." And that, again, is on the webpage of our East Hampton Police page. We are already a city that engages in community policing. I propose that the city council consider removing the language Sanctuary City from our discussions. That term in and of itself is very problematic. Within the larger state of Massachusetts, Governor Baker has decided not to declare the entire state as a Sanctuary State. And within that initial legislation, if the whole state was considered, it would be called a Trust Act. And this term is much more in line with community policing. Baker has acknowledged that each city or town within the Commonwealth has the legal right to consider whether to declare their own police engagement policies. Enacting the Trust Act within the city of East Hampton, which in my opinion is a more appropriate term than Sanctuary City, implies that any person traveling through East Hampton, working or doing business in East Hampton, enjoying the many public parks within East Hampton, working or doing business in East Hampton, and for us, living in East Hampton, should feel trust in their police department. Community policing depends on people trusting the police force enough to tell them when something is a miss. Community policing depends on creating reciprocal trust. Community policing depends on reaching out to the most marginalized group -- communities within a city. Those who are without material or cultural resources, those without a voice, those essentially who have the most to lose by cooperating with the police. And the police need to convince them that our police force is more concerned about what any person has witnessed and how they can help solve crime within our community -- sorry, lost my place here. Hold on. And that -- community policing depends on reaching out to those most marginalized -- duh-duh-duh-duh. Convincing them that our police force is more concerned about what they may have witnessed than where they are from. Community policing depends on building trust with all community members, that unwarranted profiling, including unwarranted traffic stops for citizenship verification, is not an objective of our police force, and that East Hampton recognizes that it actually erodes effective community policing efforts when that fear is placed there. Those who are in favor of East Hampton Police voluntarily collaborating with ICE to conduct immigration enforcement are actually asking that municipal resources, police, municipal employee time, money, potential space for holding people, be devoted to a federal activity, that we are not under any compulsory act to have to comply with. They are asking that municipal dollars be spent to do something which is the purview of the federal government, and the consequences for doing that are potentially a breakdown in the model of community policing on which East Hampton's police department relies. So, moving forward, I would really encourage the use of the term Trust Act, and really, that's an indication that all people should feel trust within the police, and that our police are taking all measures to earn that type of trust within our community. I laid out a lot of the misnomers about what people are assuming Sanctuary City status is, simply because I know this is going to be a public forum of hearing public statements, and I want everyone to know the legal definitions that we're discussing here before approaching the podium. So...
Thank you, Councilor. I did see that Councilor Hayes is here, so I don't know if Councilor Hayes, as the sponsor, would like to say anything? I would invite her -- no?
No, I'm okay.
Okay. So, I think before we open it up to the public, I think maybe if we could get Chief Alberti and the mayor, if you -- do you guys have any statements, maybe just to clarify what our current policies are? Get a little bit more clarification. Thank you, Chief.
Good evening. Bobby Alberti, Police Chief here in East Hampton. I hear -- I'm here to listen to what the public has to say. I can clarify if anybody has any questions about our current policies or procedures, the way we currently do business. But I'm more inclined to --
We can't hear you.
We can't hear you.
Uh-uh. Shouldn't have microphones.
Is the microphone on?
It doesn't -- It doesn't work. You just have voices.
Bobby Alberti, Police Chief, East Hampton. Good evening. I'm here because I want to hear what you people have to say. I want to hear what the public has to say about this issue. I can go through what we, the police, currently do, what our policies are regarding this issue, and what our past practices have been. I've laid them out prior to in another city council forum, but I'm more inclined to, tonight, listen to hear what the public has to say. And I can clarify any questions that people may or may not have about what we do, or what they perceive we do, or what they perceive that we don't do. And that's about it for me.
Chief, if I may?
Sir.
I appreciate that perspective. However, I see people in the audience that I don't see from before. So, if you wouldn't mind just a brief synopsis of what the police do or not do in cooperation with the immigration service, government, I would -- I certainly would appreciate that.
Sure.
And I think it helps the public, I think, understand what we do or don't do already.
Right. So...
So, I guess --
Thank you.
I'd like to --
Exactly. So, thank you, Councilor Kozinski. So, I think what he's asking is, we had an initial meeting December 7th, and obviously, you weren't all here. So, I -- first of all, I'm very thankful to Tamara for outlining and switching -- I think our main concern here is labels and perception and misunderstandings. So, we originally started this. This is an initiative brought forth by Councilor Jennifer Hayes as an agenda item for the city council. And from that, at that December 7th meeting, it was referred to Ordinance Subcommittee for discussion. That's why we're here. So, we're here to listen to all the concerns that you have, and hopefully, to clear up misperceptions, especially by incorrect labels. So, I'm really thrilled that you started off with, you know, talking about, "Let's not use that word." And that is most of where -- so, originally, what we came here for on December 7th, the chief and I, together, to figure -- we, I guess, assumed is probably the not -- not the right, correct word, but we thought by explaining to you all what our police department does now, what they stand for, what they do, what they don't do, what our community is. We are a very unique community, and I have to tell you, this division of our community is very upsetting. I feel that we stand for a compassionate community, a very welcoming community, and I feel that what our whole goal has always been peace. So, the division of the yes and no's is part of the process of getting everybody to feel that they can speak at the public process, which, again, which Councilor Derby said, this is the public process. This is our process. So, when anything is brought forth, this is what we do. We listen, and we discuss it, and we go from there. So, I will turn it over to the chief to, again, hopefully, by outlining, you know, the things that the police department does now, their policies, their past practices, and how -- I think it would eliminate a lot of the fear that this whole initiative is brought forth on, and hopefully, you know, resolve a lot of your concerns. I have the utmost faith in our police department. We -- I have just sworn in, within the last month, five -- five police officers between the cap -- between the chief, the captain, the lieutenant, the detective, and the police officer. So, nobody can explain more about what their policies and their practices for our community than them. So, I'll let the chief take it over.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, mayor. So, I'll start with -- I'm going to give you a very brief overview. I'm going to try to alleviate some concerns and fears that may be out there. But essentially, I don't want to -- I really want to hear from you guys, not for nothing. So, I'll give you a brief overview. I'll be as brief as I can, and then, like I said, I really, really want to hear what you guys have to say. So, I'll start with a U-visa policy. We have a policy in place. It's been in place since 2014.
Louder. It's going to be hard in this room.
I know. We have a policy in place from 2014, which is, it's called a U-visa. And essentially, what that is, is a mechanism in place for illegal immigrants or undocumented immigrants to come forward to the police as either victim or witnesses of crimes, without any fear of being either deported or detained or otherwise. There really is no reason for them. Matter of fact, if they come forward to report a crime, or if they're a victim or witness of a crime, we can apply strictly for them up to four years to stay and work and have visa within East Hampton and within the country. So, the idea that people are hiding in their houses or apartments and not coming forward to tell the police that something has happened, or there was a crime, or they were a victim of a crime, is a complete misnomer, because this mechanism is in place to protect them. And not only is it going to protect them from being deported, it's actually going to keep them here for an additional four years. So, that is pretty much that with the U-visa. The past practices of the East Hampton Police Department, we've only notified ICE in the events of criminal investigations. In my career, and Captain Patton's been here a lot longer than me, we've never notified ICE for running across somebody that's undocumented civilly that was not committing a crime, or other agencies asking us if we have undocumented or illegal immigrants here, unless it was criminally related. So, to that end, I can give you instances from a criminal perspective when we actually have worked with ICE. One of which was recently, you may remember, we had a fatal accident on Hendrick Street here in East Hampton, and we had an undocumented -- on Hendrick Street here in East Hampton, and we had an undocumented illegal immigrant driving intoxicated, killed his three-year-old daughter, and also killed one of our elderly residents. So once we started that criminal procedure and criminal process, immigration became involved, he was going to jail, he's in jail now, so when he gets out of jail, there's mechanisms in place with the Department of Correction and the courts to, he'll be subject to deportation. But again, that was a criminal matter. We've had Mexican traffickers from the border set up shop here, moving kilos of cocaine and heroin on Main Street here in town. We conducted a lengthy wiretap investigation on that organization, and once they were arrested, they too, we had immigration involved, they too were subject to deportation after their criminal process. Otherwise, I did some research today, and I have been doing quite a bit of research, in the last five years, we've had three interactions with immigration here in East Hampton, and all three were criminal matters. There was no civil immigration issues, or any civil immigration interaction between ICE and the East Hampton Police Department. With regard to the status, checking people's immigration status, if they're a viable suspect in a crime, then we'll look into their immigration status. If an arrest has already taken place, we'll look into their immigration status, again, criminally. There are some exceptions to that, and that is in particular when people are avoiding us and not, in a criminal investigation, they're being deceptive as to who they are, they're not telling us who they are. We may reach out to many resources to try to find out who they are, to include the FBI fingerprinting immigration, just for the sole purposes of identification, a true ident- a suspect. What do I want to get into next? At the end of a plea, so when, and again, it's all criminal, when a criminal goes to court, and if they try to have a plea agreement with the court, one of the questions the court will ask, whether it's a misdemeanor or felony, at the end is, do you understand what you're pleading to? And they go through a whole litany of questions, and one of the last questions that they ask is if they understand that if they're pleading guilty to something, that they may be subject to deportation. So there's a, there's a mechanism in the court system for criminal deportation. We rely on the Mass Department of Corrections, they notify ICE of undocumented immigrants, but again, criminally, who may have convicted felonies, and under that agreement between the Commonwealth, it's under an existing agreement, between the Commonwealth and the Department of Homeland Security. There are no task force officers from East Hampton on any ICE task forces. So there's also a misnomer that cities and towns have officers and detectives assigned to immigration, that, we don't, we don't have that here. I don't have any of my officers assigned to immigration. Some people, quite a few people had asked about federal dollars and the idea that, or the rhetoric, at this point, I think that we're going to lose federal dollars if we buy into the sanctuary city or trust. So to that end, I can tell you, over the last couple of years, we, the police department, have received over $500,000 in federal drug fast, drug forfeiture. We rely on federal dollars to the tune of about $22,000 for bulletproof vests for my officers. The fire chief informed me that 60, $617,000 of federal money was purchased our fire, our ladder truck. FEMA has provided over $200,000 in federal funding to the city. We have an amazing CERT group of people who assist us all the time, and the federal dollars there is 50,000. And we're working on a Union Street reconstruction right now, where the city's going to pony up $450,000 in city money for the design, and if that goes through, I'm sorry?
Three million.
Yeah, I was going to say, if that goes through, we'll be able to obtain about 3 million in federal dollars. So I just wanted to put that out there as a piece of fact, because it's been asked of me a lot, if, how much federal dollars do we, the city, and certainly public safety, acquire from the government? As far as the law goes, it is, it is the responsibility of federal immigration to enforce immigration law under Title VIII, and that's dealing with unlawful presence within the United States. There's no statute for the local police or state police to enforce immigration law. I think that's pretty clear, but I know that there was, there was some confusion there. What maybe the confusion is, is that we work with all law enforcement, all police departments, all of our federal partners, in every walk of policing and law enforcement. So there was some misconceptions there, whether or not we, the East Hampton Police Department, enforce federal immigration law. The answer to that is no.
No. It's not like we have a partner.
That's pretty much all I have as far as what we do and our policies. So I'll leave it for, if there's any questions after, I'll be available.
Thank you, Chief. So at this point, we'd be happy to open up the floor to people who are interested to come up and make a statement. Remember, three minutes is the cutoff point, and try to keep it nice, good decorum. Thank you.
Don't forget to state, name and address for the record.
Evening, everybody. My name's Matt Scouran. I'm from Campbell Drive. I won't speak aloud, I'll try to anyways. Thank you for having me up here today, appreciate it. I wasn't going to speak, but I feel like I'm compelled to. I think that East Hampton is one of the most open cities in Massachusetts, and has such one of the most open in Massachusetts altogether, and that makes it one of the best on the planet. Okay? This country has some of the best policies as far as people loving other people, and that's great. That said, recently Congressman Cumberson, Culberson, I'm saying his name wrong, from Texas, worked with Attorney General Loretta Lynch to pass in July the ability of the new administration to halt any federal aid to law enforcement, plus passed aid penalties for cities, counties, and states that participate in sanctuary city actions, whether in name or anonymous action, such as a trust program. This is a done deal already. I have a couple of questions I want to put out. I don't expect any answers, but I think they should be brought up into this forum. We already heard from the chief how much our city is currently receiving from the Fed. What are we going to do to replace that money? Because the Trump administration is going to come after it. Do we pull it from our Level 3 middle school? Do we stop rehabilitating mill areas? Do we fire police officers? Do we fire counselors? Where does that money come back from? Make no mistake, renaming this issue does not make it okay or not okay. It feels like, a little bit like sleight of hand, and I'm a little disappointed in As far as one other thing that was mentioned, and I just wrote this note down, we spoke about sanctuary cities, and how they, we're talking about how East Hampton doesn't want to go after people door-to-door and things like that, and I agree with that. I don't think that's appropriate. However, other cities, like San Francisco, which I just visited, has morphed their sanctuary program into just that, where they turn blind eye to criminals. We can pull up any number of news articles about that over the last few years. That has to be addressed as well. This is one little step where we say, oh, well, you know, we're not going to do any of these bad things, and there's bad things on both sides, but we're not going to do them, but what's stopping us? Well, six months from now, well, you know, we passed it, it's okay, we did it. Why don't we go a little bit further? Then why don't we go a little bit further? Then why don't we go a little bit further, and it's not East Hampton anymore? I raised my, I chose East Hampton to raise my kids because of how open it is, because of how good most of the schools are, how good my neighbors are. I just feel that this is something that we don't need to do in name in order to make some people, and I'm speaking about people in the city that aren't in trouble of illegal immigration, but just live here, to make them feel like they're doing something to make themselves feel good to argue with the new administration that's coming in. I feel that if it had gone the other way, we wouldn't be having this argument or discussion. And that's all I have to say. And with three minutes...
Thank you very much. Is that it? No. All right. Okay. My name is Betty Sanderson. I live here in town, I've been here for over 45 years, and I think we have a really good town that we can be very proud of. The way it has changed in the last 20 years is phenomenal. We are a respected town, and people are wanting to live here, and are excited about the things that are going on in this town. And our police have done a good job. And he just explained all the wonderful things that they are doing to try and help everybody feel safe, and to work with this immigration and new laws. I see no reason to make us a sanctuary city when we're already doing the job we need to do, and lose the money from federal funds that we need to keep our town growing and progressing the way we have. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mike Smitschinsky. I live at 58 Campbell Drive in East Hampton. I was here in December when this was originally brought up, and when I came here, I raised three points. I'm just going to state them very briefly, I'm not going to get into any explanations. I said, number one, I haven't heard any authority that East Hampton can do this at any level. Number two, I believe it's a matter of public safety. And number three, there are financial liabilities if someone gets hurt or killed by someone that is an illegal immigrant, especially if they have a felony. So that's just a reiteration. What do I have to say now? Well, first thing, which is not part of my prepared remarks, but I'm extremely disappointed in this Subcommittee. You made it sound like, well, you've done all kinds of studies, but I can already see what your bias is. You should be impartial, and I don't feel that at all. Don't feel that at all. Does not make me feel comfortable. Seems like a rigged... You guys could not clap for... It seems like a rigged system, and I don't like that. Secondly, the loss of federal funds, that's a very real possibility. And property owners in this town, your taxes are going to go up if we have to get the infrastructure and other kinds of equipment that we need. Secondly, it was brought up in the last time that we were here, that, well, Amherst has done it, North Hampton's done it, South Hadley's done it, you know, now we're talking about Springfield, I don't want to be those towns. That is not my interest at all. I want to be East Hampton. I want to be unique to East Hampton. I want to have control of East Hampton. And my feeling is, if the police do less, that does not make us safer, does not make us safer at all. I don't see how that possibly can happen. There's been any number of crimes resulting in murders and deaths across the country from illegal immigrants who should not have been here, who'd been deported many times, and we didn't do that. So just in closing, I also want to say that not only this Subcommittee, but the City Council, it's not a privilege to sit where you are, it's a responsibility. And your job is to go out and find out what your constituents, that's who you represent. You don't represent your own individual ideas, you represent the community. If I were in your spot, I'd be walking through my neighborhood, my precinct, and I'd be knocking on doors, saying, what is it that you want? I wouldn't give any opinion, just tell me what it is that you want. And I don't think that's happening at all. So this is a hot-button issue, and people need to be heard. Thank you very much.
Hi. My name's Rich Habhab. I live on North Hampshire Street in East Hampton, and for the past 10 years, I've been a member of the Bar Advocate Panel for Hampshire County, better known as Public Defenders. I don't see why we need to call this city one thing or another. I think the police, if an immigrant is involved in some kind of criminal action and arrested by the police, it's a matter for the, for the courts and the police to deal with. I know that I had one, a client, who, when I looked at his record, he had like 10 aliases, and he worked his way up from South Carolina, and then he got to Massachusetts, and I guess he borrowed his girlfriend's car or something, and took off for three or four days. She reported it used without authority, and the North Hampton Police picked him up, and there was an ISIS detainer for him, for the judge to hold him. He was held. I'm not sure what the result of the case was. I didn't follow it all the way through, I'm not sure if it went to Superior Court, I can't remember exactly what happened, but, you know, the police took care of it. I just don't see why we need to name ourselves one thing or another. I think it's being taken care of. That's all I could say.
Please, just one second. May I, your last name, please, again?
Habhab. H-A-B-H-A-B.
Thank you.
My name is Catherine Derry. I've lived in East Hampton for 10 years, in this area since 90s. My name is Catherine Derry.
There's no speaker, so if I just really have to speak very loudly.
Just loud. Okay, my name is, my name is Catherine Derry. I've lived in East Hampton officially for 10 years, in this area for probably 20. I'm a physician. I see all kinds of people from all walks of life from this area, and I think that it's very important at this particular time that we let the most vulnerable people in our communities know that they are safe here. The symbolism of this, and the support of people who are very afraid, you think you're afraid of losing dollars. These people are afraid of losing their families, their lives, going to jail. That's fear. That is fear. That's it.
Hi. My name is Sarah Amoroso. I live over on Winter Street.
Did you get that?
A-M-O-R-O-S-O. Amoroso. I live on Winter Street. I have three young sons in the East Hampton schools, two of whom have some mild special needs that are being taken care of very well. My oldest son has mild autism, and he often asks about the climate and the things that he hears in the news. And one of the things that is difficult for him to understand is why we make groups of people who are included and not included. And I think that's especially poignant for him, because he's at risk of not being included because of his minor disability. It is almost impossible for me to say, because I do not know the status of any of his friends or schoolmates. How could I explain to him if one of his friend's parents is taken away? And that is one point. The other point I have is that the police are not asking us to, they don't want to do anything further. They want to do their job as they've been doing it. They don't want to do something that they think will impede their jobs. Why would we ask them to take on an extra responsibility that they think, not only do they not want, they think is not appropriate? When we say we have a lot to lose, I think it's scary. And I have as much on the line as anyone else, because my children probably take more resources than other people's children. But I wouldn't want to sell off some other child's parent just because I was fearful for my own. Thank you.
Hi. Thank you, Christina Sears, Peacock Circle. Sorry. I know.
They want to do their job as they've been doing it. They don't want to do something that they think will impede their jobs. Why would we ask them to take on an extra responsibility that they think, not only do they not want, they think is not appropriate? When we say we have a lot to lose, I think it's scary. And I have as much on the line as anyone else, because my children probably take more resources than other people's children. But I wouldn't want to sell off some other child's parent just because I was fearful for my own. Thank you.
Thank you, Christina Sears, Peacock Circle. Sorry. I know, I heard that three times already. I live here in East Hampton. I've been here thirty-seven years. I came to the last meeting. And I wanted to say, as far as, I don't feel that we have a language problem. I don't think that you can put a mask on whatever word you want to call it, it's still the same issue. But with that being said, some of the things that you said, let's not use immigrant and illegal immigrant interchangeably. They're not. Makes it sound like we're against immigrants coming in. Oh, makes it sound like we're against immigrants coming into the country and giving us diversity and bringing the things with them. That's not it. I think it's the problem with legality. So that's what I wanted to address first, is that U.S. Code Section 1324 does state that anybody in the United States knowingly or in reckless disregard of the fact of immigrant, illegal immigrants coming to entry or residence in violation of the law, aids or abets, the commission of any of the proceedings, acts, shall be fined and imprisoned for up to five to ten years. So it is federally illegal. Additionally, the Supreme Courts uphold that immigration is the right of the federal government. It is their responsibility. It is not the local and town's responsibility to enforce immigration. Also, that federal law trumps state and local law in these situations. And that is all laws I could quote, but I'm not going to. So what I wanted to say is that in this town, I've heard that from the last time, the council really hasn't stated any benefits to the residents of East Hampton by declaring us a sanctuary city. You have not shown us any benefits. The council repeatedly states that nothing will change, it will not mean any changes that are already in existing policies. Everybody that has, you know, proed this motion has also said that the only reason to do it is so that the city can't be forced to use its law enforcement resources or monies to enforce ICE regulations and federal laws. So I'm not really understanding exactly why you want to do this when there is, there seems to be no benefits and that there's no changes in the policies. So as residents that are opposed to this motion, we'd kind of like to be proactive in not drawing attention to our city and using federal funds. It is a real possibility. It's a moral issue. I know that people want to feel good about doing the right thing or what they think is the right thing. And, you know, it's just that if any city or town opposed, let's say, gay marriage or abortion, or just chose to defy the Supreme Court because, you know, it was a feel-good for that city or state, then what are we saying?
Christine, you had three.
Sorry, what?
You had three, three fifteen, so try to wrap it up.
Okay. So I'm just saying that, you know, it's, you know, we can't choose to ignore whichever federal laws we want to do. So there's always a price to be paid. If I were hungry and wanted to feed my family and I go down and rob 7-Eleven, am I going to jail? Probably. I'm not going to be let go even though it's, I had to feed my family. And you feel badly for me, I will have a consequence. So as the chief said, the law enforcement can't be forced to uphold federal law and be ICE agents. They just can't. It's just against the law. It's a doctrine that was against the law. And the last thing I'd like to say is that it is really a real scare that the, I don't know if you know who Congressman Lou Barletta is, but he's a Pennsylvania congressman. He is proposing for the third time House Resolution eighty-three, which states that they want to pull all federal funding from anybody that's sanctuary city. Currently, over three hundred sanctuary cities, they have a list of them all. They can't get federal fundings back for a year. This is going to be proposed. So...
So four twenty-four.
I'm sorry.
I think, you know, you've exhausted the three minutes.
Okay.
I appreciate that. I would ask anyone who feels that they have more to say, if there's somebody, a neighbor who might take some of the time and speak, if there are certain notes or certain things you felt you haven't communicated, please.
Well, one last thing I do want to say is that, listen, I just don't want to be, I'm sorry, I don't want to be a willing participant in aiding and abetting or harboring or breaking the law. And I will not sit complacent with it, and I will obtain legal counsel to withhold my property taxes, so I'm not involved in that until it's resolved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just for future reference, once you reach the time, I will hit the gavel once. And if you go over that, I will continue to gavel. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Libby Reinisch. I live on Clark...
One quick, one second. I heard a comment after the speaker, and I'd appreciate if we could refrain from making any comments to anyone who has spoken, so that we can have a civil discourse. Please. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Jaci.
My name is Libby Reinisch. I live on Clark Street, and I want to...
Speak up.
I'm sorry, my voice is quiet. I'm here to address the subcommittee anyway, so I'll do my best.
We...
I'm here to address the committee.
I think if you do face the direction there, I think we'll still be able to hear you. You can try that. And I appreciate that you're here to talk to us.
I won't take that from your time. I'll restart, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. Well, I'd like to thank for her very thorough and well-thought-out explanation of the issue that we're dealing with here. I'm here to support you and this proposal to put something on the books in the city of East Hampton that confirms that we will not use city resources to enforce federal immigration law. I do want to address the common misconception that we are in imminent danger of losing federal funding if we implement such a policy. This has already settled law. The federal government is not allowed to condition federal funding on a matter that is unrelated to the funding that's being given. So for example, the federal government could not take money away from the Union Street Reconstruction Project because of a policy we have about immigration. They're unrelated, it's unconstitutional, it's been settled by the Supreme Court. So there's that. And I just want to say, you know, I think it's, I really appreciate hearing from the police department. Community policing can be really great, but I see no reason not to just be really clear and put it in writing so that everyone in the community understands what they can expect. I also, you know, I got engaged with this issue when I saw an article in the Gazette about this very vocal opposition, and it just made me really sad. So I wanted to make sure that people who were supporting the proposal had an equal opportunity to be heard. So this afternoon, I actually submitted a petition to the mayor, signed by a hundred fifty-four East Hampton residents who support what you're trying to do. And I just want to make sure that you get a copy of that as well, so I brought copies just for your information. And, you know, I just, I think this is a really important thing to do, not only because it protects us from... Okay, sorry. So the last thing I want to say is that there actually have been cases where municipalities and counties have been sued and have lost for illegally detaining people per ICE detainer requests. One county in Pennsylvania gave up a judgment of ninety-five thousand dollars against them for illegally detaining someone who was a U.S. citizen who was suspected of being an undocumented immigrant because he had brown skin. And he was jailed for three days even though, and he was not convicted of any crime. You know, I think we want to make sure that we protect our city and our city's resources from litigation like that as well. So thank you for your time.
Your time, three minutes on the dot.
Is that proper that, you know, petitions and names can be submitted here?
I think this is a copy of something that was already submitted to the mayor. It is a public record, so if you're interested in getting a copy, you can see the city clerk. I'm sure she'd be happy to give you a copy. So...
My name is Christina Hubner Torres. I'm a resident of East Hampton since two thousand and seven, and I work in a federally qualified health center locally. Please speak louder so we can hear you out back here. I am taking a moment to voice my concern by being in this room this evening and hearing the side talk. One of the reasons why this is such a critical issue, and it is important to name ourselves and to be clear about where we stand on this issue, is it gives our police an opportunity and our community an opportunity to be symbols and to be examples of setting the tone for how the United States and how local and state and federal tone should move forward, especially with the incoming administration. There is an incredible risk that so many people are going to face increased backlash from discrimination and racism. We have already seen it. And I have stood in this room now for whatever time this meeting has gone on, and I have heard it left and right. And that concerns me sincerely. I am a Puerto Rican German woman. My mother is a Puerto Rican woman. My partner is a Puerto Rican woman. We are not undocumented, but we have many people in our lives and families who are either immigrants. I would suspect everyone in this room, at some point in your family's ancestry, was an immigrant into this country. And I would like to know that the place where I have invested my home, that I pay my taxes, that I have chosen to reside, that I feel wonderful when I walk into the Biggie and I see my neighbors shopping, I would like to know that they are my friends, my family, my neighbors, and we are in solidarity to extend our sense of community to everyone and anyone. The police have made it very clear that anyone who commits a crime is handled with the crime that they commit. This is not about looking the other way when someone commits a crime. This is about saying you are safe and you are our neighbor and we care about each other. We are all part of a system together, and we have got to listen to what the chatter is around in this room and elsewhere and recognize we are standing right next to very real, very scary elements of racism. And not wanting to name ourselves a sanctuary city at its core is the effect of racism. We need to be actively anti-racist in this time. Thank you.
So I'm going to speak loudly. My name is Ruth Torado. I want to identify myself as an American citizen. I am of Ecuadorian descent. I was born in Latin America, but I was raised in Massachusetts for twenty-six years, and I'm not a criminal. I went here and raised in the public school system, and I'm very grateful for all the experiences that have been given to me in the Pioneer Valley. But I am very fearful that the rhetoric of hate in this room that is going back and forth is crumbling our own humanity, our own sense of friendship and love and security. So the fear of having immigrants can be real. It is a challenge to what is normal and everyday in this community. I chose East Hampton because I love what it stands for. I love that it's integral, it's small, it's quiet, it's homely, but I love that it is safe, and I'm grateful for what it has given me. But this rhetoric of anti-other, this fear of the other is something that is sensed from the rest of the immigrant community, and it is very real. So I want to remind you that, I want to remind more of the board, the committee, or council members, that I am new to this community by defending what is right, what is symbolically trustworthy. And to me, this is the right statement to say, we are friends, you belong here, and you can be safe. So whether naming it as a sanctuary city, whether we name ourselves using the Trust Act, the name is what it is, it's language. But it shares the sense that we are nothing to be feared. We are community. We shouldn't be misrepresented or misinformed as criminals or deviants. We are people too. We bleed the same color. So please keep that in mind, that whatever this, this language that we're sharing amongst the national policies and politics, we are people too. Please remember that. Thank you. Let's share my addresses. Sorry. My name is Ruth Torado, three twenty-four H. Main Street.
Thank you, Ruth.
Hi. I'm Amber Black. I live at four ninety-three East Street. I also work in East Hampton. I don't want to debate the merits of this initiative. I want to say that I would like to see my local tax dollars and police resources spent on local policing and local matters and leave my federal tax dollars to, towards federal immigration enforcement. That's the mechanism that we have in this country. That's what they do. They'll do that. Locally, I'd like to see our resources stay local and be as productive as possible locally. So I applaud the city councilors who brought this measure forward. I support you, and I want you to know, I didn't intend to speak tonight, but after hearing many voices condemn this initiative and condemn you for bringing it forward, I wanted to be one of those to say, I support you, I support this effort. And I have many friends and neighbors, some of whom are here and some of whom couldn't be, who I know support it as well. So I hope that you'll make this initiative an official part of East Hampton policy.
I'm Ken Bushy from forty-three Highland Avenue. I just have a couple of quick things I want to kind of bring up. In Councilor Tammy's whatever...
Introduction.
Proposal letter, she did bring up a couple, one point that's been kind of, I think, overlooked. She brought up that in the last ten, twenty years, there's been a change happening out here. It's been going, it's happening, and it's been going smooth. She said there's a study saying it. By putting a label on something, saying we're this or that, does restraining order make you any safer? You know, there's a lot of research out there that shows it's a piece of paper. Everything's a labeled piece of paper. Bottom line is, we're not talking about immigrants. We're talking about legal immigrants. Everybody in here, anybody here, Native American? Not yet. There's a lot of immigration here. I don't see, I don't meet many people that are against it. Bottom line is legal. This basically, this label that we want to put on just basically divides people between legal and illegal. That's where a lot of people see it. I honestly believe if everybody's here legally or trying to be, I think it's a great thing. Our police are doing the right thing. Our chief said, we get somebody that's illegal, we get them a pass for four years. I don't think this is what we really need. Maybe what we should look into is setting up a committee that forms a group that helps illegal aliens become legally here. That's what I see. You know, I'm all for protecting everybody. Bottom line is, what's dividing most people, it isn't about skin color, it isn't about, oh, you come from here, you come from there. I know people across the board. I know people that are illegal here. They go to the hospital, walk in and out, get their stuff, don't pay a dime, and it's free. You know what? I don't make a phone call and turn them in. It's not my job. But maybe we should look at is helping these illegals become legal. We're a society here of legalities. I follow all the laws. I'd like to see everybody else do it. That's all. That's all I ask.
My name's Eli Damon from fourteen Ward Avenue. I'm glad to hear from Captain Alberti that police practice in this town is already consistent with the proposed ordinance, but I don't think that at all makes the ordinance unnecessary. When you're vulnerable and you are afraid that your life will be destroyed by cruel and callous treatment, there's a big difference between, between whether someone follows a practice and whether they make a commitment to following that practice. follows a practice and whether they make a commitment to following that practice. It makes, it makes a big difference in feeling like you can, like you can trust them. And I'm not, I'm not an illegal immigrant. I'm not the kind of person who's stereotyped as an illegal immigrant, but I have been vulnerable and I have been afraid and I have been treated in a cruel and callous way and I didn't know who I could trust. And I don't, I don't want that for anyone. I want this town to be a place of trust, compassion and understanding. Thank you.
My name is Bart Prendergast and I will talk as loud as I can. The cold is kicking in. I live at Toogoff Street. I've been listening to both sides. What brought me to the podium is the fact that I can feel the division in my community. What is truly hurting me personally as a person of this community that I adore, I was in the sixth grade and I want to move to East Hampton because I thought it was a fascinating town. Ladies and gentlemen, just because I decide that sanctuary city, Trust Act, whatever you want to call it, is already being done and I don't want a policy to tell me how to treat my neighbor. That is how I feel. Because I stand on that side of it, it doesn't make me dislike my neighbor anymore. It doesn't make me want to pull out all the immigrants. I don't want anyone thinking that of the people who have questions about it, concerns about it. We're all on the same side. We're all trying to do a good community. But just because I stand on the side that says, if we're already doing it, why do we need a policy? I'm tired of the government telling me what to do by policy. That's all. But it doesn't mean I want someone hurt or I dislike that side. So please, ladies and gentlemen, take a breath because we all have an opinion, we all have a way to go with this. But please, us that are concerned and asking questions, and we have every right to, doesn't mean we don't care about our neighbor. So please, take a breath.
Just quickly for one second, I'd like to thank everybody for the civility that I see here. Keep it up, you're doing a great job.
My name is Lauren Simmons and I live on Fairfield Avenue. And first I just want to say I'm supremely grateful to be here because this is what democracy looks like and I think we're all thankful that we live in one. I'm also glad to learn about the community policing efforts because I worked for many years as a paramedic in Springfield, Hoyoke and North Hampton. And I saw and worked with a lot of vulnerable people and I saw what happened when people were afraid, they were victims, victims of sexual assault, robbery and worse. And they couldn't come forward or they were feared, they feared for their lives or their children's lives. I don't want to see that. I've heard a lot about, why do we need to do this? Because of, it's just words. I'm an editor, so words mean a lot to me. In the business world, a business company will establish a mission statement. Think of it as a North Star. It's because in the hectic day-to-day of your life, your work, whatever, you sometimes lose track of what's really important. And that mission statement keeps everybody on track. It's not meant to tell you how to behave. It's not meant to tell you how, how to think. It's meant to say, this is our community, this is what we believe in. We have a spine and we're not afraid to show it. So I really encourage everyone to think about this. We're a mixed bag and thank God we are because that's so important. And I want to listen to anybody who wants to talk to me. I don't care what your position is, I'll listen to you if you'll listen to me. Thank you.
Thank you for holding this meeting and starting this conversation, which I think is a very important one to be having. My name is Tristan Chambers and I live on Clark Street. I moved to East Hampton in 1996. And believe it or not, racism was a problem in East Hampton. On one very memorable occasion in my life, while at a park on Pleasant Street with a friend of mine who is black, we were informed by a teenager about our age, a couple of years older, who was white and didn't have any hair on his head, that we had to leave the park because my friend is black. This is an incident that, you know, we hear stories about this and think that this is over, but it's not over. This is in 1996. Thankfully, things have changed in East Hampton since then. I haven't experienced something like that, to that, to that extreme. But I'd like to call attention to the fact that, as others have, East Hampton is changing. East Hampton is becoming less white. There's something else changing. Our country is, there's a lot of racist rhetoric going around right now. And I'm hearing that in that room, in this room right now. And that really concerns me. And I think that this community should embrace the people of color who are coming into this community. I think that this is a responsible activity, a forward-thinking activity, to acknowledge this change and approach it with civility and responsibility and an adult attitude. Moreover, this is not about immigrants, this discussion today. It's about people who could be mistaken as immigrants. People who have a Spanish accent, people who have brown skin, darker skin. These people do not deserve to be harassed. They do not deserve to be stopped longer when they're pulled over. They do not deserve to be questioned longer, even if they have committed a crime, just like lots of white people do too. And I'd like to call attention to the fact that, from our report from our police, there have only been three incidences among the many crimes committed in our city where there was an immigrant who was undocumented. So this is not, this is not, you know, an issue that impacts East Hampton in a great way. Some kind of influx of undocumented immigrants, you know, an unnamed individual, describe them as rapists and murderers. So I want to dispel that, those prejudices that I'm hearing and I'm getting a feel today again about this. So I just, I think it bears repeating that immigrants in this country actually commit fewer crimes than U.S. citizens. Let's remember that. Let's not forget that. Thank you.
My name is Jennifer Hamilton. I live on Main Street in East Hampton.
I myself am an immigrant. I feel this necessary to point out because I think that we are living at a time when someone like me would not necessarily look like someone who should be afraid. I am more afraid than I have been in a very, very long time, in fact, my 20 years in this country, in part because as a critic of the incoming administration, I have real concerns about how it is that immigration will be deployed against people who are not citizens here, whether they are undocumented or they are like me as documented people. I really appreciate the sort of discussion of community policing brought up by the chief. However, that is not a policy determined by the citizens of East Hampton and ratified by our city council and can change on a dime depending on who is in that position. And so for that reason, I advocate very strongly in support of the proposal and suggest that we adopt ourselves as a sanctuary city because the shift, first of all, the anti-immigrant rhetoric around these things is just incredible. It's unprecedented in my lifetime. And I think that we need policies in place and we need to make a very, very strong statement that says, this is who we are, this is what we believe, and we're going to put our money where our mouth is. So thank you. And I'm going to, my husband's going to come up. Thank you very much for addressing your position.
Hi, my name is Jacob Speaks. I live on Main Street. And I am from the city of Atlanta, from just down the road from Ebenezer Baptist Church. I think that we need to be a city that is encouraging more diversity. The mere fact that we pat ourselves on the back because we've gone from 95% white to 91% white is in itself a problem. I also know that we have a problem of racism in this community that often goes unspoken, often goes unsaid. I have friends who are people of color who, for example, constantly have their bills checked to see if they are counterfeit or not at local stores. My wife, who is an immigrant, on the other hand, is from Canada and has never not received her bill check. So we have to ask ourselves, are we doing things that will make people more likely or less likely to come into this community, feel safe and make this a more diverse place? To that end, becoming a sanctuary city says to people around here that, no, we are not different from and less tolerant than Amherst, less tolerant than North Hampton. Not only that, that we have solidarity with the other towns in our area and as a result of that solidarity are more protected against any kind of federal government. And the last thing I would like to say, and it's strange to say right in front of the police, but I am breaking federal law all the time because I have a medical marijuana card. And I don't hear anyone here saying, oh my God, we have people all over the place who are breaking federal law because we are using medical marijuana and therefore we should not, you know, protect those people. So I, I don't have fear that by saying this, I am immediately going to be handcuffed and turned over to the DEA. So I don't understand why this then is such a huge problem for other people to say that, no, when someone else is detained, when someone else is stopped, when someone else, whatever, that they are not going to be turned over to a federal agency, just as I'm not going to be turned over to that federal agency. And the difference is, and I think it should be very obvious, that one thing is about race and about being other, and the other is about marijuana, which this state obviously thinks is okay, even though the federal government does not. So I want to be a place that is more like the place that I came from, that is down the street from Ebenezer Baptist Church, more like the place that is down from where Martin Luther King preached and less like a place where it congratulates itself because it is only 91% white. Thank you very much.
It's going to be a tough one to follow, so I'm just going to go with my prepared statement here. I'm an educator in East Hampton and there's nothing more important to me than children feeling safe.
Name and address, I'm sorry.
Sorry, Leila Hazen, Prospect Street. Nothing is more important to me than children feeling safe and welcome in their community. So in that spirit, I'm asking the city council to please pass a resolution stating that the East Hampton City Council will use its authority to ensure equal, just and fair treatment of all East Hampton residents and visitors. And please urge the mayor to pass an executive order to further implement this vision. I choose to live in East Hampton because it's diverse and welcoming. Please help keep it that way. I support the concept of the Trust Act as outlined by Councilor Smith and I do not support city funds or time being used to enforce federal immigration laws. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Robyn Weingarten. I live on Brink Street. I've lived in East Hampton since about 2009 and this is the first time I've set foot in a meeting like this, in a public meeting. And I've been spending my time on Facebook, talking to people who think the same way I do, as probably many people in this room have been doing. I haven't been talking to a lot of people who don't think the same way I do, so I'm sorry that I missed a lot of this meeting where apparently other people spoke who I might not agree with. But as a Jewish American, you know, my ancestors were not welcome in a lot of places. And if it wasn't for people who broke the law and put their lives on the line and hid people, I might not be here and a lot of people I'm related to and a lot of people I know might not be here. And our new administration is trying to do the same thing to Muslims and also Mexicans and anybody else who might look like them. So I think the reason that we're here is that we've all been part of this national polarization where either we, you know, we watch Fox News or we watch MSNBC or whatever and, you know, we hear different sides. And I'm glad that we're all here listening to each other. If we don't all agree, that's great. But I just want to weigh in and I think, you know, all this anti-immigrant sentiment is why we're here. And it's going to be up to the local cities and state governments and communities to protect people now because I think we have a federal government coming in that has an agenda that's political, that is trying to scapegoat lots of people that they would like to just deport, to detract attention from what they're really trying to do, which is really for their own profit and their own gain, which again is my political views and, you know, I just think it needs to be said. So thank you.
Hi, my name is Darnell Blackwell. I live on Wright Street. I bought a house here in 2003. The first thing I wanted to bring up, perhaps again, is that the president does not have the constitutional authority to universally withhold funds. That's just not, that's not the case. Nor can the president or Congress be coercive in their allocation of funds. This is a subject of some interest to me because I'm an accountant, so. The second thing is the difference between practice and policy. I think that this is an important, it's an important thing to have passed because even though the police department is in practice, already doing very much what it sounds like this is intended to do, if it's not policy, then it's discretionary. So that means it depends on the, you know, the mood somebody might be in on a particular day or something like that, or, you know, good or bad. So that, you know, what we want, or at least what I want, is, you know, a uniformity in saying that, you know, we're not going to use our local funds and our local resources to further an agenda that we may or may not support. The last part of it, and speaking strictly, you know, from a personal standpoint, as of, well, I should, I should start by saying that, you know, at least half of my ancestors were so very much liked that they were imported here against their will. So, you know, the issue of immigration is, you know, carries a different, you know, tone with me. But the, historically and institutionally, certain groups have been marginalized and more, subject to harsher treatment from all kinds of local, state, federal institutions. By just saying, by turning a blind eye to it and by effectively doing nothing, it's the same thing as acquiescing to a situation where other people, people that are different, people that stand out, can be singled out for, for treatment that's, that's less than what I guess you would say the majority would expect. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
The reason I stopped it was because it was a direct attack on a counselor. That's why I stopped it.
My name is Tony Sellers. I live on Fairfield Avenue. And I would like to add my voice to the people who've said that there's a difference between policy and practice. And right now, we have a police department that's not doing any of these things that are unsavory or we've been talking about, we don't want it to happen. But police departments can change, police chiefs can change, there can be officers who may have a very different idea about this whole trust thing. And as gentlemen said, in any given interaction can, could use discretion to do a lot of things. So I think that it is important for the city to pass this because not just as a symbolism that who we want to be, who we are going forward, but if we are against our police department being used by the federal government for purposes of enforcing immigration law, then we should put our money where our mouth is and say, okay, we have an ordinance that says we won't. Not that, well, we're not doing it, so don't worry about it. No, we won't. We're not now, we won't be going forward. This issue of sanctuary cities does not come up in a social vacuum. It's... It's coming up, I think, at this time, as everybody knows, because the political climate is changing, there's going to be increasing pressure on cities to do as many discretionary things as they can, and we're already hearing people talk about, you know, this is Texas and this other place, the federal government's making threats, take your funding away unless you, unless you help us, which is, isn't, is not a legal thing to do. You can only expect this pressure to increase in lots of different ways. And to look at a historical context, who 30 years ago would have believed it could be mainstream discourse to ban Muslims or to have special security units surveilling Muslim neighborhoods? People would have thought, that's crazy. Even Richard Nixon would never have gone for something like that. So, this is not just for today, it's for going forward, because this pressure is going to get bigger. Right now, it's about immigrants. Who might it be about in the future? Someone who is maybe thinking of getting abortion because abortion's been made illegal? Or someone who's living with someone of the, or as a couple of the same gender because a few years down the road, that's illegal too? Okay, we don't know what's going to go forward, so I think we should take a stand for what's right, and that's it.
I'm Charlotte Briggs, and I live on Franklin Street. I've heard a few things this evening that concern me in terms of attitudes, but I hear from those who are opposing this measure, mostly a love for this city that I have and a shared value in the inclusiveness of this city, and I really appreciate that. And that, but what I hear is a concern that if we're doing the right things already, why do we have to raise a flag about it and put ourselves at risk as a city in losing funds? And so, that's what I'd like to speak to specifically. I have a good friend, Antoinette, who came to this country as an immigrant as a small child. Her parents were refugees, political refugees from Chile. They had to spend two years in Peru in a refugee community before they could get a visa to come here legally. My friend Antoinette deeply resents immigrants who are here illegally. She's for the wall, she's for deportation of illegal immigrants. She and I differ on many things politically, and those are some of them. Probably at least once a week, we consider unfriending each other on Facebook. We remain committed to our friendship and to listening to each other and to learning from each other. Antoinette and her husband and her father and her brothers are all police officers in a city that is designated a sanctuary city, and they would not have it any other way, because they are convinced that their community would be less safe, their public, their relations with that community would be in jeopardy if that weren't the case, that people would be afraid to come forward and report crimes and cooperate with them if that were not the case. Now, we may think, I think it's reasonable to assume if you've never been in that situation, that immigrants know what our police department's policies are, and especially if they're illegal immigrants, they're going to know that, and they're going to know where they can and can't live without that being an issue. My personal experience is that that is not true. I spent decades moving in different communities, never knowing if it was, if it was safe for me to call the police when I was physically attacked more than once, had my tires slashed, had crank phone calls, all for homophobic reasons. Maybe as I'm an affluent, white, educated person, maybe I should have picked up the phone and called my police and said, "What's your policy?" Never occurred to me, I'm not sure I would have felt safe doing that. Traveling, I never knew where I was safe to call the police if I needed that. These are not transparent things. If we have a policy, did you?
I got three.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. My final point is that if we have a policy that we are following in a democratic society, we should have the integrity to be transparent and public about that so that everybody knows it.
Thank you. My name's Patrick Tucky, and I live on Pine Street, right around the corner up here. I moved here about 10 years ago because I live with a very vulnerable person in a shared living environment. It's kind of like adult foster care. So, I live with a client at Riverside, and I moved to East Hampton because it's a nice, safe place for a guy like that. He could walk out my front door, he goes downtown, and when he walks into Shelburne Falls, they know what he wants for coffee. He knows what barista is going to serve him, and if she's not there, he's not getting it. I really love East Hampton. I got a two-family house, and I put it, I put my apartment up for rent, and I get 35 hits a day. I tell people I live down the street from Cottage Street, and we know that's where North Hampton moved to. I've been proud to live in East Hampton most of the time. There was a time when I first moved here that we, the City Council and ACP and Springfield, and there was a little embarrassment going on. I've heard people here, all the way from the left and the right on this issue of sanctuary city or trust, and a lot of people in the middle are saying, why do we got to call it something? Well, within a couple of days, we're going to see a newspaper article that's going to tell you, we're either the ones that decided to do this, or we're the one city around it decided not to. And I'd rather not be embarrassed to live in East Hampton again. That's all I got to say.
Hi, my name is Mariellen Deluzio. I live on Mineral Street in East Hampton. Thank you for the opportunity to address the council. I guess at this moment, I'm kind of afraid. I do not support the sanctuary city, and because of my opinion, I've automatically been labeled a fee, I'm afraid, and I'm a racist. I'm afraid that maybe you haven't really heard our point of view. I'd like to try and bring another perspective that hasn't already been pointed out here tonight. I have a family member who's a person of color. I'm a first-generation American on my father's side, and my father certainly experienced a lot of prejudice when he immigrated to this country. And it's not a good thing, we're not perfect, and we're not perfect in this city, but we'll always strive to be better. Our family member, we have family members that are on a seven-year waiting list for their first application for a visa to come to this country, to immigrate legally. I support that. But I'll tell you, there's talk of coming here illegal when they hear all of this, and how frustrated they are when they hear about the opportunities that are being given to illegal immigrants. We are not, those of us that are against the sanctuary city or trust are not against immigration, people of color, people who look different. We're not afraid of change. I support change, it's evolution, that's good for society. But I do believe in the laws of this country. I know when you make a decision to come to this country illegally, you've made a poor decision. I'm very sorry about that. I've witnessed it myself. I've been to the Cal in Texas, a border-crossing town, with serious, serious issues with illegals coming across it. Horrific stories I heard while I was there of what these poor undocumented people experienced coming to the point where they crossed the border. It probably pales in comparison to things they've experienced in this country. The three main reasons, I'm talking to the social workers and counselors and immigration people who work with us. The three main reasons, I just want to point this out because we don't hear it a lot. When they ask them, "Why did you come? Why did you do it?" And I just thought you might be interested to hear this. Number one, the missionary churches in those countries encourage them to come. They said, "We're not deporting people. Go." There are signs hanging up in various countries, say, "Go to the United States, they're not deporting." There's radio messages, it was even on TV. Number two, relatives in this country are encouraging their relatives to come. We're not deporting people. Come. Number three, President Obama, whether it was, he said it or not, but it was interpreted that we will not import people. It's a complex issue, and a simple statement of sanctuary city or trust, I feel, is only going to add complexity to this and is not going to solve anything. I just, that's my main comment. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Noah. I'm a business owner in this community.
Noah, last name?
Modi. Thank you. I'd like to start by encouraging people to think of why a person might decide to uproot themselves and immigrate illegally to another country where they face poverty-level wages, bigotry, and oppression. I'd like to encourage people to consider the conditions that they're coming from in order to make that sacrifice and why they would do that. And I would also like people to consider the fact that the statement that's issued here is simply a statement that we will act in accordance with the law. It is a conservative statement. If we are not willing to make this conservative statement because we fear federal funding being taken away, what else are we willing to concede? What else? What's next? Who is next? That's all. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Linda Broadhurst. I live on Lawler Drive. I've lived in East Hampton 25-plus years. I'm hearing a lot of stuff about racism, like because we don't want a sanctuary city means we don't like blacks, or Puerto Ricans, or gays, or transgenders. That's not the case. I welcome anyone of any color, any sexual preference. I don't care who you are, if you're a caring person, and if you're here legally. If you're here legally, I have no problems with you if you are a member of society, if you are contributing to our city. Welcome. Come, join us. But if you're here illegally, I'm sorry. In the words of David Ortiz, "This is my effin' city, and I don't want you here. I don't support you."
Hi, I'm Lauren Kessler. I live on Spring Street. I am a homeowner here and a tax payer, and I like the sound of a sanctuary city because it sounds safe to me. And I would think that other people want to live in a place that is safe and sounds safe. So, many people in this room have ancestors that came from Poland or came from Ireland to come work in the mills, okay? Many people were not welcomed here and lived with that discrimination. And now, they're citizens, you're in this room now, okay? I think about immigrants who are here either legally or illegally, they're undocumented. And why did they come here? What did they leave, okay? Did they come here for, to leave a place that was dangerous to them, okay? How old were they when they came here? Some people that we're talking about are kids, little kids, you know? I hear this talk of criminals, okay? We have criminals that are legal, we have criminals that are illegal. We have criminals of every color, shape, and size in this country, okay? We want to protect the people that are not criminals, that are your fellow citizens, your neighbors. There's a lot of fear in this room, and it's not necessarily fear of, it's fear of the unknown. We talk about federal funding being removed. Well, that's an illegal action, okay? That can't happen, all right? And if that's a threat to us, we should take it seriously, and we should fight back. Because if they want to get rid of the illegal immigrants first, then they're going to want a list of the Muslims, then they're going to want a list of the Jewish residents, and a list of the gay residents. And where do we stop being complicit with prejudice and discrimination, okay? I don't think that this is a community that wants that, but I think we need some facts on the situation, and we need to think, do we want to protect the people that are here, or do we want to sell them down the river, all right? They're not, being a sanctuary city does not mean that we're not going to work with the government if there's a criminal here that's undocumented that they're looking for. It just means that we're not voluntarily using our resources to pull people out of the community to give to the government to deport. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Bob Meisner. I live at 83 Hollyoake Street with my wife, Ann. I just want to take an opportunity to let you know that I have legally helped an immigrant to this country. I filled out the paperwork, I took the liability for five years, I spent my money. I just want you to know that it can be done, and can be done legally, and pretty fast also. Took four months to get him here. He's an intern in Florida, going to be a doctor, so, I mean, you all can do this. All right, I'd just like to thank the mayor, Police Department, the committee, okay, the fine job. I think you're doing a great job in East Hampton. But, I think your responsible, responsibilities are to the needs to the residents of East Hampton, okay? Not to some political philosophy that seems to have taken hold under the current unrest in this country, okay? We have a talk of a lot of fear, okay? We have fear of what? Okay, we have a new, we've got a new sheriff coming into town in Washington, whether you like it or you don't like it, okay? And you know sanctuary cities are going to be on his list to take on, and I don't think at this particular point, it is prudent for us to take this step to make us a sanctuary city. You said it's illegal to stop federal funds? Federal funds are like an air hose. You can gently step on them, or you can step on them very, very hard, and this community would be crippled without federal funds. Our police department's doing a wonderful job as they stand. I think we should be putting resources and having meetings to support these people because they're, under these commissions we're under, they're at war. People are at war with our own police department. That's where we should be putting our focus and our money. Doing a great job, keep it up. Thank you.
My name is Josh Sahusa. I live on Harrison Avenue. I wasn't super prepared to speak, but I kind of felt compelled to. I think one of the first things is that there's so much harmful and hateful rhetoric with just the words immigrant and illegal immigrant. If we just interchange all of that with just people, these are people, and that's what it really comes down to. And East Hampton is an amazing place for people, and we wanted to say, great for just people, I believe. And the Police Department's already doing this, and they are people as well. So, by calling us a sanctuary city, it just shows that we are a place for people. We support what the Police Department is already doing, and we want to let everybody know what you're doing, and we want to let everybody know what we're about here. So, I think it just kind of makes sense to just make it, you know, well-known, that we're an amazing place for all people.
My name's Donald Torrey. I'm from School Street, East Hampton, and there used to be a saying, "Let sleeping dogs lie." And I think we're at that point. If you're going to bring up sanctuary cities, which I'm opposed to, you're looking at a lot of problems with this new administration. And if we lose federal funding to the Police Department, which is already on the books, it could happen. The rest of the federal funding is not on the books, but this gentleman here was right with what he was saying. It's also a crime to employ somebody without proper documentation. I've been in business 37 years, and I have an I-9 form for every employee. So, these people that are employing the people illegally, they face crime, and there's penalties for such things. Maximum can be $21,563 if they're a repeat offender on employing undocumented aliens. I'm just opposed to the sanctuary city. I'm just opposed to the sanctuary city, and I know a lot of you people are in favor of it, but maybe you just hate the new president coming in. Maybe it's a political statement. I don't even know an undocumented alien. I don't know an employer that employs one. Now, somebody must, but I don't. If I knew a business that was employing them, I would not frequent that business because they're not playing by the rules. It used to be a country of laws. So if you want to start ignoring this one, what other one do you want to ignore? The police department's doing a great job. Just leave it the way it is. You don't have to identify it. That's all I have to say.
Hi, my name is Kate Collins. I live on Carolav in East Hampton, and a lot of ground has already been covered on both sides today, but I just want to take a moment to say, if you have never been a victim of a crime, a victim of an assault, when you are at a point in your life when you had fear of reporting that assault, then I have a story to tell you. It's way more than three minutes long, but I am happy to share it. I've never been an immigrant, and I've never been illegal in my immigration status, but I have been at a point in my life where I lived in fear and had fear of reporting that. I want to stand, and I want my community to stand, on the right side of history. I do not want to be on the side of history that said, "I am more concerned about money than about humanity and about compassion." So I just want to stand in support of this ordinance, whatever you decide to call it, and for anybody on either side of the issue, if you want to hear that story, I will share it with you regardless of what side you stand on. Thank you all.
My name is Luis Feliz, and I live on Parsons Street, and I have to preface what I'm going to say by first acknowledging that there are a lot of people in this town that are not here today. So I feel like the onus is on me to somehow, not necessarily speak for them, but note that, for the record, that there are people in this town that have made this town theirs as much as some of the folks that have spoken here today. They may not necessarily be homeowners. They may, that may not be their claim to this town and to belonging here, but they contribute to it. They help it, they help run it. They help by working in laundromats, by working in different sectors of the economy. I don't want to pinpoint where these folks work based on what's been said here, but if you look around, there are people in this town that would benefit from us taking a stand and saying that this is a sanctuary city, which would mean that it wouldn't be an invitation, because as some people have already highlighted, immigrating is not a, it's not something that people grow up looking forward to. It's not something that is easy. I'll share a little personal story. My father was undocumented at some point in his life. He got on a raft and sailed from the Dominican Republic to Puerto Rico, and he almost died in that process, in that trajectory. And the reason why he left was because it was in the 70s, 80s, and the United States was part of supporting a regime that instituted some policies that made, where basic food was very expensive to buy. At that time, I was a baby, and my father could not afford to buy the milk that they needed to feed me. So when he left, he didn't leave because he loved the idea of coming to a new land where he had to learn a new language. He did it because it was basic survival. What would you do if your kid's survival or your own well-being was at stake? You would do whatever's, you know, whatever's in front of you. Any opportunity, you would take it. So the idea is that when people immigrate, they do it because life circumstances are so unbearable that they have no other outlet but to flee, to escape, to leave, to uproot themselves. Think of that word, uprooting yourself. It hurts. It's taking something that you're, like, as much as love and, you know, and respect for this town as you have, people have that for where the places that they're coming from. So imagine if somebody told you, "Pick up your bags and leave because there's no more food in the supermarket." So I just want to say that by being here today, it takes courage, and I applaud the folks that feel that somehow they would be targeted, but it's also a little ironic because that's not the case. I mean, we're discussing people that look like me being targeted, not other folks. And last summer, I was with my wife on the bike path here, and like I said, if you look at me, you wouldn't know that I, you know, speak English. You wouldn't, who knows what assumptions you would make of me? And somebody was sitting down, and they said, "Oh, look at them. Look at them. They come in packs." So I was with my daughter and my wife, and we were on the bike path. And then I came around and I engaged the folks, and they were surprised, so they were really apologetic about what they said, because they realized that I understood what they said. So, thank you, and I just want to, for the record, I am in support of sanctuary cities, and for all the people that would benefit from it, including myself.
My name is Olivia Geiger, 11 Union Court. I have a lot of thoughts on this, but I do want to start by saying I'm glad we're all in this room, and I'm upset by the divisions and the, from this election that's going on in this country, also within my family, and I truly believe we need to be in rooms talking to each other like this, and I hope that a decision isn't made on this resolution based on not having the facts straight, based on talking past each other, because, and my head's exploding a little right now in what to share, because we're having many different conversations at once right now. It heartens me that a lot of people, that the policies that the police have been practicing are already in line with this resolution, and it heartens me that so many people who are against the resolution because of the fear of losing funding do support the police practices. But I do agree that it's important to pass the resolution in order to have a clear policy that can make people feel safe and that's widely known and used across the board. And I would encourage, regardless of the decision on the resolution, that, you know, I am upset that federal law, that's not even, you know, fully understood, and that I hope we get to the bottom of what actually the loss in funding would be. I'm upset that that is dividing even us in this room, that there are a number of people who would agree with a resolution if we're not for the loss, the potential loss of funding, this threat, and we should stand up for local sovereignty. I would hope people on either side of the resolution would support this community's decision to put into law the practices that the police included believe make our communities here safer. I, before living in this area, I lived in Providence and taught English as a second language for five years, and most of my students were undocumented, and many of them became very good friends. And so I heard their stories of why they came, and I heard about the fear and anxiety they experienced on a daily basis, and I heard the stories of the threats their employers were using to get away with not enforcing basic labor laws that should be applied across the board, employers using the threat of deporting their workers. And that not only hurts undocumented immigrant workers, it hurts all of us, undocumented immigrants that I know want nothing more than to become legal. They are in long waiting lists to take English. And I hope that we can also have more conversations about the immigration system that is broken, but this isn't a decision on immigration policy federally.
Hi, my name is Magali Shulghina. I live on 41 South Street. I want to publicly come out on record to being in favor of the ordinance. I do believe that it is, from what I've heard and studied, fiscally conservative to approve this practice and put it into a policy. I am a legal immigrant, legal, born-born legal immigrant, and although I have gone through all the procedures, I just want to say that feeling safe is extremely important as a community. I want everybody to feel safe. I want to continue to feel safe in East Hampton. I would like for East Hampton to continue to have those conversations, especially about immigration, even though the ordinance is not about immigration. It is about making a current practice into a policy. By the process of becoming an immigrant and then a citizen of this, I studied civics and the Constitution. We are a country of law. Therefore, making this into a law, I believe, will protect us. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Emily Khan. I live at 65 Maple Street. Me and my partner just bought a house this past year, and we're really loving living in East Hampton. The reason I decided to come speak, I wasn't really sure I was going to, but to tell you a little bit about myself, I studied Latin American and Caribbean studies at Hampshire College. I worked in immigration groups after college and during, and I also worked in the food service industry all throughout school, which put me in touch with a lot of people. I'm also from Southern California, so having worked in the food industry there also put me in touch with many people who had a variety of documentation statuses. The reason why I really wanted to get up here is because I think the notion, even the belief that anyone in this room doesn't know somebody who's undocumented is false. We all know someone. If you've ever eaten in Northampton, you have met an undocumented person. If you have eaten in East Hampton, you have met an undocumented person. You get any basic service anywhere in this area, you have met someone who's undocumented. They are just in the shadows. They're not going to come up and tell you about their documentation status because they don't feel safe. I don't know, this is kind of, might sound a little random, but I don't know if you guys have ever said "I love you" to someone, but you kind of expect a response, right? So imagine you say "I love you," and somebody meets you with silence. This is about needing someone back with the need to say "I love you." So people come to our country, they work here, they contribute. Documentation status or lack thereof, everyone contributes. So we need to express that we are creating a community of trust for everyone here. Thank you.
My name is Chintia Pika-Smith. I live at 54 Ward Avenue here in East Hampton. I am a homeowner and a taxpayer, and I support this, I support that we become a sanctuary city. Like someone just said, I think my head is exploding. I don't know how many comments, but some of the things that I would like to reiterate that some folks have already stated is that the vast majority, the predominance of undocumented workers are law-abiding citizens that work very hard to support their families. There are people who come here because they are escaping war, trauma, hunger, and they are coming here to work, to feed their families. That's all. By implementing this resolution, we are not doing anything that is against the law for those who are concerned that we are somehow going to be punished. It is not okay to let sleeping dogs lie. Slavery was legal in this country. Apartheid was legal. Colonization of the world was legal, but there were people who stood up and didn't necessarily do what was lawful, but what was ethical, and what was moral, and what was compassionate, and what was human. I am raising a five-year-old child, and I want him to know that what guides us are ethical principles, compassion, and love. And in this case, we're not doing anything legally anyway, right? Okay, it's not, we're not, we're not breaking the law anyway, right? So just remember that, too.
James Ramsey. Campbell's Run. Doesn't work?
Doesn't work.
All right, I'll just begin. I was wondering why I know this. Okay, there were a lot of good speakers. March, that was well-stated. I believe that, I don't believe that we need to have the label of a sanctuary city. We are a city. We were a town, now we're a city. There are laws that say you have to be a legal citizen. You should be here legally. I'm sorry. I had this all ready, but... So we're a nation of laws. Somebody also said that the law is, you have to be here legally. We all have relatives that came from other countries, maybe, that, I'm going back generations of my, they immigrated here. They had sponsors. They came here to work here. They did it the legal way, and they contributed to society, and it was, they didn't need, when they came here from the other side of the Atlantic, they didn't need to have, "Oh, we're going to go to East Hampton because it's sanctuary." They came to America because they wanted a better life, and they did it legally. And that's, I just, just do it legal. I mean, I don't know. That's my, it's, to me, it insults the people that did it the right way, the people, generations that did it. Sorry, I didn't know it was a debate.
No, no, please continue. Continue. Your time.
Okay. That's all. I just, my grandparents, grandparents, they all, everyone's had somebody that came over here. They worked, and they contributed. That's all. I just, I don't think we need a label.
Hi, my name is Jeff Napolitano. I formerly have 19 Pleasant Green, but I'm actually here as a member of the American Friends Service Committee. I've been working on social justice issues, and particularly immigration issues, for about a decade now. Some of you might have been at the forum that we held at Eastworks about a month ago. I wasn't planning on speaking, but a couple of things just occurred to me, and that is largely, I know, I wanted to try to address some of these questions of legality and the questions about the loss of federal funding. I could point out that, you know, for folks who are afraid of being overrun, we're actually deporting more undocumented people than, President Obama has done that more than any other history, any other president in history, that these references to Representative Culberson and Baretta and U.S. Code 1373 and U.S. Code, well, 1234, and, you know, why, those actually have nothing to do with sanctuary cities. I wish that sanctuary city status meant something far more radical and something more meaningful, but a lot of the objections that people have brought up have nothing to do with what a sanctuary city is, as the chief pointed out, or what the chief described as basically the policy of a sanctuary city. And so, on one hand, I think that you really can't be opposed to sanctuary cities and also turn around and then applaud the chief and the police department here. There's a bit of cognitive dissonance there. From the conversations and the arguments that I've heard from people, and I haven't heard so many invocations of the U.S. Code before, but, you know, if you want to talk about, you know, the Constitution and why a president and even Congress can't withdraw funding to a city based upon an unrelated issue like immigration policy, you can look up the 1987 decision between South Dakota and Dole. You can look up the 2012 decision between the National Federation versus Sibylus. But to be honest, I don't think this is really the issue. I know that people are citing all of these things, but just hearing the two different sides, I think that, in what I've had, tried to have conversations to sort of present facts, I do sort of encounter this rhetoric of, one woman described it as hate and described it as something akin to racism. I think that the crux is that if you don't want the policy of the police department to change, or the practice of the police department to change, and you think they're doing a great job, then one way to make sure that happens is to support the sanctuary city resolution, or the executive order or the ordinance. I think that citations of the United States Code mask something a little bit uglier, and I think you would all be led a little bit better by appealing to morality and your better angels. Thanks.
Hello. My, my name is Michael Skelly. I live at 4 Stanley Street, and I have never spoke publicly before. This is the first time. I think this is a very important issue, and that's why I'm here. It's taking a lot of guts. I'm very nervous. This, this idea, this, this hang-up some people have about the legality, we, we are a nation of laws, it's true, and I'm a law-abiding, abiding citizen. I want everyone around me to follow the laws of our country, but some of the greatest changes that have taken place in our country have come about because of civil disobedience. And there is a place for that. This, this isn't about civil discipline. I just want to point out that there are times you have to resist and do what's right, and, and, and people would, would die if they, a lot of people would die who have come here, might have died if they waited to do it legally. So, there is, there's many people who have done it legally. I applaud them. They have different circumstances, but there's so many people in this world that are starving, that are, that are being oppressed, and they're desperate, and, and they're coming here to save their lives. So, this idea of waiting and doing it legally, that's all nice, that's pretty, that's flowery, it sounds good, but the right thing to do is the right thing to do. And, and I think there is an elephant in the room here, and, and it's about our president-elect, and he has all the earmarks of a fascist dictator. I know that sounds extreme, and I'm not saying he's going to be a fascist dictator, but we have, if we knuckle under the pressure because we're afraid we're going to lose funding, this and that, where, where is it going to end? We could end up, and just because we're America, we're the land of the free, and we have a great system here, it, I have seen it start to erode. We are, we are inching toward fascism in this country. It's a slow inch, but it's there. It is there. And so, that's, that's what, I wanted to just point that out. Nobody has mentioned that. This guy is dangerous, but I just wanted to say that.
Objection.
My name's Pete Coranzis. I live on High Street.
Pete, a little louder.
Please, everybody. I think I'm kind of on the fence because there's a lot of guesswork going on, and some of you are super pissed off. What I would like to see is data. I work with data in my job. I make sure, I work for a health insurance company, so I make sure we're compliant with legislation, et cetera, things like that. If we're not, there's a serious penalty. With that being said, we're about, the new president's about to take office. We're going to see things he's going to implement. That gives us a hell of a lot more information than speculation, right? In a boxing match, if you have two, two guys ready to fight each other, one of them scouted the other one. He knows his technique. He knows what he's going to use. He's going to fare a lot better than assuming he's going to use a certain technique right off the bat. So, if there's a rush to push this through, if we can take all the emotion, just set it aside briefly, and just see what's going to happen. We have towns near us that are going to experience consequence if there are any. You know, so we have almost like a experiment setup. We can view it and see what's going to happen. We can still implement change if we need to. There's also the aspect, any legislation, any change they implement, it's very specific on wording. So, if you want to protect people using specific wording, but they put it on basically a blacklist, if you, if it falls into this umbrella, you know, they're going to attack you with that. Well, what if we call it something else? But if you basically play your hand now, you might be hamstringing yourself for the future. That's all. So, I just wanted to, if we could wait and just see what's going to happen, because it's going to happen pretty soon, or it's not going to happen. But we're, we're right on the cusp, so I figure if we held back just a little bit and just get more information instead of guessing, that might be more prudent. That's all.
All right. So, we've been here a little while now. Heard a lot of ideas and opinions. Would anybody else like to be afforded the opportunity to speak? The floor is open.
Is there any way this could go to a town vote rather than putting it all on?
I second that.
That would, that would, that's actually a, that's a good question. I believe that requires a much more lengthy process. Maybe the mayor can help me with that one. It's a certain threshold of signatures?
Signatures and...
Come to the podium, please.
It obviously requires, you know, signatures, you know, basically, kind of like what was happening here. It's a different type of petition. It's a petition to, but also the councilors are the ones that can vote to have something put on the ballot. You would know that it wouldn't be, for to put something on the ballot in November, it wouldn't be legally binding, but it would, you know, be, you could put a ballot question on there, yes.
How many signatures would you need to, to do that, or?
I don't know offhand. I think it's quite a few, I mean...
Right. There, the, the signatures would, to, to answer your question, if you wanted to know about the signatures regarding an election, that would be the city clerk's office, and that would be a petition to put something on the ballot. But the councilors also, you know, that is normally, you know, as you know, we've done it when we need, when we've been looking for debt exclusions. We'll put something on the ballot, which was council action.
Thank you, mayor. So, councilors, do you have any comments? Counselor Hayes, would you like to say anything before we wrap up?
I just want to thank everybody for coming. It's been great. It's good to have this time and what's going on. This is why we put a call in. We were all happy to, well, I was. I mean, us receiving the first thing, I asked them to consider sanctuary, so I think it's been exactly what we're going to do. Thank you for your time putting it together. And councilmen, that was really, really...
Okay, so, next steps. Sure everybody's interested in that. So, nothing was presented to the ordinance subcommittee as far as an ordinance. And I want to give a little clarification because there was a lot of words thrown around tonight, and as far as the ordinance subcommittee goes, our responsibility, our purview, is to the ordinances of East Hampton, which are the laws that we create that go into our book of ordinances. And, so that being said, that's one of the things, one of the tools that could potentially be used in this situation. The other tool is an executive order, which the council has no purview over whatsoever. And then finally, the third tool is a resolution, which is basically a statement. And so, as the chair of the ordinance subcommittee, after, you know, some reflection and some thought around how this would fit in our current ordinances, I don't believe this would fit in our current ordinances. And, and I'd be, I'd like to entertain my fellow councilors to see whether they agree with me or not.
That what doesn't fit into our...
That the sanctuary city designation does not fit in our current ordinances necessarily. And my personal view is that this is something that would make more sense as a resolution coming from potentially the ordinance subcommittee to the full council. And so, that's kind of, that's where I stand. And I don't know, I'd like to hear how you guys feel.
I certainly would like to look at prospective ordinance.
Well, we haven't seen, we haven't seen any.
We haven't, we haven't seen it. So, to make a determination whether it fits or it doesn't, I'm not ready to go either way on that.
That's, that's fine. That's my opinion.
This is the first time I've heard that raised by anyone. So, that's, that's interesting. Could you maybe explain that just a little more? I mean, we, we have ordinance on solar energy, solar power. We have ordinances on lots of things.
Right. This came from my, my research, kind of looking at what other communities have done, and very few, the only one I could really find, actually I could find wording on was San Francisco. Almost, at least what I could find in my limited research was, most communities will do an executive order or will do a resolution.
I will agree with you. Everything I've seen pretty much has been a resolution or executive order.
And then talking with the city clerk, saying, where would this fit within our ordinances, she was perplexed. So, if I can perplex Barbara, then I wonder if it's the right avenue. That's, that's where I came to that decision.
I had a short conversation with Barbara earlier, and I think she was alluding to that, but we weren't specifically talking about this ordinance.
Okay.
Could you speak up, please?
Do you have a comment here?
Okay.
I certainly would, would, would think that a resolution or an executive order would probably be legitimate route.
Okay, so, so...
Or, or not.
How do you guys feel about opening up for more public comment? Would you, agreeable to that?
Opening up? That's why people are here. So, we're in a comment. Please do.
It's really just a question. Adding to the list of...
Could you stand up, please, and, thank you.
Jamie, number 114, he wrote.
Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you.
Someone brought a list of 150 names to you, up to you, and I have a feeling that there are others who would sign it, if that was about...
The petition is called online.
Okay.
It's up to 150.
Please.
So, my understanding is that an ordinance by a city council and an executive order by the mayor, those two options would both be legally binding, and that's, I think, what many of us who are here to support you tonight are hoping for. The cities that have passed resolutions have had an accompanying executive order from the mayor that has the legally binding information in it. And so, you know, either way, an executive order or an ordinance, I think will get us where we need to go, but a resolution on its own will not get us where we need to be.
Right. And I, and I think that, you know, from the, the perspective of the council, we, we don't have any control over the mayor, whether that would happen. And, and I do know, at least from the wording that I've seen in almost all of them, there's a severability clause at the end.
Could you explain that?
And that means that the severability clause basically says that if, at any point this becomes illegal, this is null and void. And I think that that's pretty, I would, I would defer to Jeff, maybe, but I believe that that is a standard practice that's placed in almost all of these, you know. So, like I said, from my perspective, I feel like ordinance, creating an ordinance, I struggled to find wording for an ordinance. I feel like is, unless one was presented to us from, I didn't get one from Counselor Hayes, or I, I didn't, there just wasn't one. You know, I would feel, as a chair, I would feel more comfortable looking at a resolution, and if the mayor felt so persuaded, which we have no, you know, power over, then it could be accompanied by an executive order if she's so felt. So, that's my, that's my initial take on it, and I'm happy to, you know, hear what you guys have to say.
In my understa, I'm sorry, did you have something to say first?
I believe there was a petition against being a sanctuary city with about 300 signatures.
Fair enough, and which has been received and we have all reviewed. Thank you, sir.
Maybe, maybe it should just be put on the ballot, somebody, I, I don't believe it's got many signatures to put something on the ballot.
Okay. That's something that can be looked into.
I think that it should go on the ballot.
Fair enough. So, you were saying?
There are some different policies at the local government level, and I understand the differences in the terms that we're talking about. An ordinance is a written law that's been created by the city council that turns into a law that is followed by the rest of the city. A resolution is a moral statement of how the city council views different social issues. We are not going to reach a point as a community where we're all going to be in agreement on this. I don't see that happening, and I haven't seen that happening so far. I've had a lot of, I've listened a lot to everybody in this room. I've listened, that's my job to do that. I also feel that I have a job to make people safe, and I actually feel that having a resolution without the support of the mayor or the police chief could actually create a much more dangerous situation for people at risk than if there was no such resolution. So, I'm not ready to commit to saying, let's make a resolution and scrap an ordinance, and I'm not ready to say, let's scrap an ordinance and make a resolution. I wanted to be clear that as a public representative, I have a moral obligation to bring these types of issues forward when a sizable population within East Hampton has asked me to do so. And, given the 150 signatures, the 180 signatures, I have about over 300 people who have asked me to bring this forth at this point. I just want everyone to keep that in mind, particularly when you're attacking the representation for doing what we need to do and represent issues that are in front of our city. I appreciate the comments that everyone has put forth tonight. If nothing else, it provides an opportunity to do a lot more research on this, and I do agree that we're not at a point where we can make a decision either way on this. And, all of these comments that have been brought up need to be fact verified, fact checked, and our decisions moving forward need to keep all of that in mind.
Fair enough. Counselor Kozinski, thoughts?
I really do appreciate the civility with which we all participated in the room. I just wish we could really reach out and hear with good feeling what everyone else is saying on the other side of the issue that we happen to hold at this moment. That's how the good exchange happens, and that's how we grow. I did learn a few things today. One of which was the individual who explained to us why someone would come to this country in a boat with the ocean being very dangerous, to come to a place where they would receive low wages, be looked on it with askance. They come because they have no other choice. It's life or death. That's what I'm hearing. And that's a situation that I'm not sure I understood before coming to this meeting tonight. That's a scary thing for any of us, and we need to understand just how dangerous it is for people who will feel vulnerable, and we need to reach out to make people feel safe. On the other hand, I also heard about folks concerned that this is a policy that we do already. We're helping to keep people safe by our policies. We don't have a lot of instances where ICE comes and picks up people in East Hampton. Do we really want to raise our heads and the issue above such that we make ourselves and the people who are vulnerable a target? Not sure that's what we really want.
Not sure about the ordinance issue and whether, how we should proceed on that. I, I'm not, I think you're right. I think it may not fit, and that may be the conclusion that we come. That may leave us with the options of executive order or a resolution. I think we need, just give me a minute, folks. I see your hands. I've been listening all night long, trying very hard to hear everybody. So, I think if we bring, continue to bring compassion and understanding, we will get to a good resolution, a good point. And I look forward to more input from everyone, and I think we will continue this. And there are a few hands, and I would like to see everyone who has a hand be there.
Fair enough. Can you just state your name and address for the record?
Name and address, please. I know, I know.
Let the people, let the people who are going to pay for this decide.
You know who that is?
That was Al DeCarlo, I believe.
Because the entire board voted for it. We wasted our time coming.
I didn't waste my time.
The, the entire board voted for what?
I can't hear you.
I said the entire board voted for what? We've taken no vote here tonight, Mr. DeCarlo.
The board unanimously voted in favor of taking this.
Oh, I'm not sure, I'm not sure you heard correctly. There were no, there was no vote tonight.
You meant last night.
At the city council.
Oh, the city, oh, if you mean this, what happened, let me talk about process. The vote that was taken was to send it to a subcommittee of the city council so that the business of the people could be discussed at this level. And then once we come to agreement on how to proceed, we will take a vote and then send the measure back to the full city council, where all nine councilors will have an opportunity to vote. So no, no final votes or positions have been taken. We're struggling to find a solution here. Anyone else?
I was just wondering if you could give us a little bit more information on the process in general going forward, timelines, how it basically works. Is that, was your first example like a miscommunication of how the actual process is functioning?
So when this, when this, when this subcommittee reconvenes, it won't be a public forum. It will be a working session of the subcommittee, where it's a public meeting, so people could come, but it's not, it's going to be a different format. So we can try to hammer out some, whether it's language or whether it's the course that we're taking. Once that happens, we'll either vote it out of committee or not. If it gets voted out of committee, it goes to the full city council, depending on what it is. If it's an ordinance, then we'll have to go to a public hearing, where it would be at a city council meeting. It would be during the public hearing, where public input is solicited. If not, if it's a resolution, it would be brought to the full council, and they, I'm sure that we would allow for public comment, and it would be an up or down vote.
Like their processes are agreed once?
It depends.
It's just...
It depends, really, on how long it takes. There's no, there's no, I think Marge was...
Marge, please. Louder, louder though. There's a noise up here. We can't hear now.
You said that it's a resolution and the mayor could do a...
Or an ordinance.
Right. Those are the three.
The mayor said you could put it on a ballot.
Or the petitioners could put it on.
So there's four ways this would be.
Put it as a ballot question.
Okay, so it could be a petition. It could be the councilors putting it on. There could be a resolution with your signature.
A resolution, not mine, not.
Executive order or an ordinance. So there's four different ways you could get the information you need as to whether or not this should pass.
There's four avenues it could take, not whether we get the...
Four avenues, right. But there's two avenues that could tell you whether the 300 signatures that Don started or the 180 plus that are happening on the other side. You as councilors, you could see what your city wants.
Okay, thank you.
But...
Sir?
Wes Hardy, Hendrick Street.
I'm sorry?
Say your name again, please.
Wes Hardy, Hendrick Street. I just have a question about the, if it is an ordinance, right, then the city solicitor would have to examine it and sign up on it for form of legal character, right?
Yes.
So has the city solicitor had an opinion as to what?
We have zero wording. We have, we have not seen any wording for an ordinance. There's no ordinance whatsoever.
So we can't give an opinion as to...
No.
So all the arguments about its legality are kind of moot, right?
Because it doesn't exist.
Because it's ethereal.
Yes.
Right? So...
Is there going to be a word?
If an action, if an action done legislatively could be illegal, right, then would that same action done as an executive order or ballot initiative or anything else, would that same action be illegal?
That would be up to the city solicitor. Ma'am?
Jerry, you see on Middle Street, is there a Fifth Avenue? Could the committee, considering the decisive nature, it might seem to be split, table it indefinitely?
I would say probably not. I would say we're going to move forward with it either one way or the other. And try to, we're going to, we're going to try to work, I mean, I feel like we've gotten a lot of good input. I know I've received a lot of emails and a lot of letters and phone calls, and I'm sure my colleagues have as well.
They have.
And, you know, I think we'll do our best to weigh the benefit, the value, and the issues in order to try to come up with something that makes sense. We'll do our best. And JP?
We've been talking about executive order, and it, I guess, with the mayor in the room and having had an opportunity to hear at least two times when folks have talked on the subject, and you may not be prepared to make any statements on it, but I would ask your opinions as to how you view, in your mind, whether or not you'll be presenting an executive order.
And since this is an ordinance subcommittee, you're not compelled to necessarily do that?
You're certainly not compelled, but just thoughts, thoughts that you took from the meeting, maybe, if you could share with us.
Right. I was just going to say that, that this is an ordinance subcommittee meeting. This is a city council meeting. I'm going to go back to this is our public process. I can tell you that, you know, that is exactly what the public process is about. This was a city council initiative. That's why it went to ordinance subcommittee, which is where it should go. That's why we're here taking public input, which is what our whole, you know, our whole public process requires. I can tell you just, just from my office, you know, we've all received many calls. We've all, but just written documentation in my office alone, and I'm not talking about personal calls. I'm not talking about, you know, personal people that have come up to me. I'm talking about written document, written documentation. Before I came up to this meeting, I probably had 300 opposed to this and 200 in favor of it. So that, but, you know, these numbers are going to keep changing. I assume that we're going to keep listening, which is what we do, and keeping ourselves open. But I think what Councilor Gervey is trying to tell you is what, what we have been trying to explain all the time is what are the options or the avenues that can be taken by the city. And when anything, an initiative comes to us, this is what we do. We take the discussion. We take the public input, and after that, decisions are made.
Thanks, Mayor. And so just for, you know, so...
Get another hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry. I just had another question. Smith, you said it was the council's duty to, when you get so many people coming to you to say, listen, this is a, an issue, it's your duty to bring it forward. And that's, that applies to all issues?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if you, if you get 150 or more signatures, it should come to the city council? So the 300 issues that came that we posed this, we want a table, we want a question, we want whatever, that, that then gets to be voted to go to a subcommittee or something? Or is it part of the same?
Part of the same.
It's all the same, all right?
Yeah.
So if somebody, if there's something else that came up regarding this with 150 issues, it comes to the city council?
Yes, if it's materially different.
If, if...
If it's materially different, if it's the same issue just in different words, then we already, we already have it.
Already, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. So our, our next meeting would normally be the 25th, but unfortunately, I have a longstanding engagement there. So that means that we will be meeting February 8th. And I think we'll probably be meeting here, but again, it's, it's not going to be a public forum. Where, this is going to be where we're actually going to try to find, whether it's an ordinance or whether it's a resolution, to find wording that makes sense and then deliberate on that.
Time.
The word, the word was public forum, and I think what folks need to understand, it is a public meeting.
It's a public meeting.
Meeting where everyone is welcome to attend and observe. There just won't be as much time, or there may be not any time. I'm not sure.
For back and forth.
For back and forth.
No talking.
Yeah. And that is going to be at 6:00 PM on February 8th.
Is that where there is a podium for, for dialogue again, but not a back and forth? Just to clarify?
Normally, normally we do have open...
Public speak time.
Public speak time before the meeting begins. So if the meeting is 6 o'clock, 6 o'clock sharp, everybody gets a certain amount of time to talk about whatever's on their mind, whatever.
And we have a pretty, we have a pretty loaded agenda, so we're going to be covering a lot of ground that night.
Can you out loud acknowledge that, or everybody?
Yep. Thank you.
And so normally, normally at that kind of a session, we don't go back and forth.
Question?
You're saying ordinance or resolution. Does that also include whether it would go to ballot or the other?
I think that's something that will be discussed with the city clerk to find out exactly what the process is. Because I'm not necessarily familiar with that.
Do you know our city clerk?
What options would come up and come through?
So I think there is the, there is the option of, that's been brought up of the ballot question. So, but I think that the city clerk needs to be consulted. I don't, I, that's not my expertise. So I don't know exactly how that works. We'll probably discuss that at the meeting, to give us time to research it.
Okay, so what you're saying, ordinance or resolution, can...
Those are, those are the things that...
You eliminated the other two options.
Well, those are what, are within our committee's purview. So the ordinance is within our committee's purview. A resolution is auxiliarily within our purview because it's kind of an offshoot. The ballot question is separate. The executive order is completely up to the mayor. So those two things are kind of ancillary.
Okay, so the city clerk makes one decision and the mayor makes the other. Is that what you're saying?
No, we're getting information from the city clerk on, on one, and the mayor does make the other. Yes. Yeah. Yep.
So I just want to be clear. So your options are a resolution or an ordinance, because those are within your purview.
Correct.
Now, if you choose one of those, would you choose one of those prior to us getting the full information about the ballot question? Because that may supersede whatever decision you make.
I, I can't imagine choosing an option before the next meeting, and that would be, yeah, no, that's not going to...
I just want to be clear, and I think the point is well taken, that, that if you guys make a decision, that could override or put something in place. And then after we learn that a ballot question might be valid, then we have to go through all of that. And I just want to make sure we do this in the right order.
If I have any part of it, we will establish what, what the process is for a ballot question, and folks will be informed in advance of any decision.
Correct. Yep.
Thank you.
All right. So I would be happy to entertain a motion to adjourn unless we have any other...
I'd like to offer one more time, just, just, sorry, maybe I'm a masochist. I don't know. Thank you very much. I make motions to adjourn, not seeing any hands.
Second?
All those in favor?
Bye.
Okay, we adjourned. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.